Okay, we have Allison online.
Howdy.
Okay, you're ready to go.
Are you good?
Yeah, you're good.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, everybody. Thank you and welcome to the November Bike Pet Trails Commission meeting. Ally, you can, you can see who's there. I don't, it's kind of hard for me to do. You want to do a roll call or?
Yeah, we have Rick, Michael, Ted, Lori, and Allison is online.
Oh, great. Hi, Allison. Okay, Ally.
Hello.
Pete. Is there, can we get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Motion to approve minutes.
Do we get one? We got a second? All right. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor of approving? I'm raising my hand.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. If I, I'm having a little trouble, so if I miss something, just shout at me, but I need, I know that before we get into the agenda, Nikki wanted to say, comment on a couple of things. Hi, Nikki.
Hi, Matt.
Can we get you, is there a microphone or something where we can get you to come up and speak to?
No. I can get closer and closer.
Can you hear okay, or is it just near me that you can hear? Matt, can you hear anything?
I can hear you, yeah. And if you lost me?
Is it just delayed?
Is it just delayed?
No, I'm wondering if you can hear the people in the room.
I.
Can you hear any?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear Rick?
No.
Hey, Matt.
No, I can hear. Why don't you just tell Ally everything if she can speak? For, I, I.
I'm not a fan of that.
I heard Nikki.
Oh, that's. You couldn't, Nikki?
I heard Nikki just fine.
Okay. All right. Okay, Nikki, go ahead and give me your thing.
I'm on?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to talk about two things. Both are pretty short. One is that, just a request from H Friendly that as you move ahead in making decisions about where to do within the town. Making recommendations, I want you to know that we gave Kevin as a big manual now, a loosely finder of our walk audits of every single priority corridor, so our request is that you tie those two together. If you're working on a street and make a recommendation that simultaneously whatever work needs to be done on the sidewalk gets done at the same time, or at least gets considered and budgeted at the same time, so we don't have to come back and say, oh, we're only doing it for bikes, but not pedestrians, but we coordinate those two. So that's the first one, and I can make a digital copy of all the walk audits. I think you have them. You have it, and if anybody wants it, then Kevin could just send that around. Okay, so that's the first thing. And the second thing is, so we at the end, we AFC at the end of the year, in our December meeting, have a retreat and make decisions about what we're working on in 2026 and what we said we were going to work on in 2025, and that it doesn't end up being like a loose thread that kind of gets left out there because when we did the, our Dangerous by Design Audit of 133, we found so many documents that had been written up about intentions that had just been left and forgotten. So the one that we have hanging out there is the Complete Streets Resolution, to do a resolution is essentially, and that was way back in March, I just signed, I think, the end of February. So I know that we had all this work on hiring a new town manager and letting the town manager get acclimated to it. And then it was, we were told at that meeting that Jared would carry the ball and anyway, Jared, I know is very, very busy. He has a lot of his played also. So I talked with Jared just a couple of days ago and asked whether or not it would be helpful if we, meaning AFC and some of the most important stakeholders got together with the, do you remember there was like a Complete Streets Legislation Packet, like how to develop that and tried to make a first draft? Because I know that he's very busy with, you know, with the staff issues and he thought it would be a good way to get, you know, the ball rolling, didn't think that we would get maybe to it until like mid 2026, if we could take a stab at it. And so he recommended somebody from P&amp;Z and somebody from BPT and AFC get together which would be like at the beginning of next year and start hammering that out. Take a look at what the legislation is, take a look at what it would look like for Carbondale. We have free consultation from the ARP Public Policy Institute and from that America Walks, Strong, I can't even remember who it was who wrote up the guidelines for Complete Streets. So I'm here really to present that to you and ask whether or not you want to move that forward and who would be willing in BPT to step up and be the person that sits on that committee.
Hey, Nikki, thanks for reminding us and keeping that in front of us. It was actually on a list of I think eight objectives the Bike Ped Trails Commission had for 2025 that Rick and I presented to the trustees in June to make sure that that got done and so thank you for bringing it up and thank you for talking to Jared about it, because I know he was sort of running point. But if it's clear procedurally with everybody in the town, I think it's a great idea that we present something, work with you to present something. What, I, I would like to, I'm happy to do that. I'll let other people on the commission get to me to see if there's other people interested, but I would be happy to work on that with you guys. Okay? And we can have, are you, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, let's connect. I'll ask any commission members who want to work on it or interested to let me know and then we'll get back in touch with you, but you have at least one participant in me. Okay?
Anybody here in the room interested in taking a look at how that, how we might present that to the town?
And there's probably, we probably have a limit of what to, that could be on that.
We can have more than two, or we could have our whole team except Ted if you, because he's also on, you know, BPT.
Yeah, Ted's got to sit in, we'd have to just have one in addition to Ted, right?
Yeah. Okay, so that will leave you, Matt, but hopefully we can hammer it out, you know, at the BPT meeting, you could take a look at, you know, as we kind of work through what we work for, because it's, if you remember, it's pretty urban center, but it gives you different chapters to look at, if your rural community. And we do have a couple of smaller communities that have come up with resolutions that have sent them to us, so we could take a look at that also.
Yeah, and well, yeah, we'll figure out, and I think it's important to connect with Jared and take his guidance from feedback from, from the town just so we don't go off in a, you know, in a direction that's the town's not comfortable with, so maybe we can figure out some way to connect with Jared and the trustees, sort of as we go through this, right? It's just, it's just, just one thought, but we'll figure out the procedures once we get working on it. You know?
Okay, Jared did give me the name of one person from P&amp;Z, so I'll get in touch with her. And if they want us to, that would be available also. So we're looking at that, we'll probably figure certain dates after the end of this year.
Okay.
In January.
That's great, Nikki. Thanks for making sure we didn't forget something. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good evening. See you later.
Bye bye.
Okay, hi, Eric.
Hi, Matt. Can you hear me?
You're going to tell us about the park. Thank you. I love to hear. I can hear you. Great, yeah.
Okay, great. Good. Yes, I'm here just to kind of let you know where Chaco's Park Master Plan process is and what stage we're in and and to get some feedback from the Bike Pedestrian Trail too. We, we produced the schematic master plan back in November 15th, 2024. Took it to the bike, sorry, took it to the Parks and Rec Commission, took it to the Board of Trustees. Got it kind of approved as a conceptual plan for that park. So the next step was really to start to let that be out in the public. We published, published it, you know, we had it on our websites. Let that be on the public, get some feedback from the public on it too. And so, so what happened since then is we did receive some feedback on the design. And so it kind of took us back to the Parks and Rec Commission with that, that that feedback. They provided some additional feedback at that point. We then took it back to the trustees with that additional feedback from Parks and Rec. We wanted to come to Bike Pedestrian Trail, but you guys didn't have a meeting, so, so we missed that little window of opportunity before we needed to present it to the trustees, so that's why, that's why I'm here now, just kind of make sure your feedback is included in this process, but also to share with you what's happened to this point, so we don't go backwards. So what's yeah, do you have a question?
No, no, I was just commenting, just talking. I'm sorry, I'll try not to think out loud. It's, I just screwed things up, given the delay. Okay.
No problem, no problem. So, so when we brought the design to the Parks and Rec Commission, in your packet, I kind of provided you the kind of history of the decision-making there, just so you can kind of see. One was the approved schematic design, that's kind of the first sheet. That had some long street parking that had kind of a straight sidewalk near the water play zone, kind of buffering the vehicle use of that street from the pedestrian use with bollards. That was the kind of design and all with the woo nerf concept where it's one level of street. And so there's some traffic calming measures in that woo nerf concept to come up onto, you know, that level. And so it feels different. It feels like to the vehicle, like it's not a normal street, which is what the woo nerf concept is trying to kind of get across pedestrian and bike, you know, focus versus the vehicle focus. So I did provide some definition of kind of what they're looking for with that concept. So what the, what the Parks and Rec kind of looked at is, hey, what, you know, what about accessible parking? You know, what, if we have parking here, why don't we make it accessible parking? So we did a little study on that and came back to them with the, with that kind of re-concept. Also, they, they felt, Parks and Rec really felt that water play design has kids running around and, and, you know, playing in the water, and they felt that there needed to be more of a buffer zone between that and a functional sidewalk and a functional street. And so those were the two kind of concepts that we, we were, we were looking at. At that time, at the, you know, conceptual, the Board of Trustees were really considering removing all on-street parking. You know, and so, so it kind of was going contrary to what the Parks and Rec was looking at. They still felt that there, there could be some, some accessible parking onsite. That accessible parking onsite, which is the next kind of sheet there, is making those couple changes that were recommended, so putting in some accessible parking with actually an accessible island there on that west side. And then creating a buffer area and a buffer zone, moving the water play more to the east without really affecting that central long zone, and because we moved the sidewalk a little bit to, and then pulled the sidewalk out to create that buffer zone. Still, you know, woo nerf concept still at one, one level, so no curb and gutter. But and still with bollards, you know, protective measure and separating the street from, from the pedestrians. So that was looked at pretty hard by the Parks and Rec Commission. We took that design into the trustee and the trustees really wanted to buy into this woo nerf concept, this, this, you know, pedestrian-first kind of concept of this space. So they really questioned, why do we have any parking there at all? And, and so you know, we, we kind of as staff, you know, kind of agreed with that concept, you know, that was that accessibility nature of the entire park was really one of the driving forces of the, the design itself. And so that woo nerf concept with no parking in that zone really allowed for a couple of things to happen, so removed all on-street parking, increased the green planting areas for both tree canopy and ground story planting and, and to also maintain those pedestrian connections across the street in those zones. So there'd actually be four really pedestrian crossing zones there that are, that are identifiable by different type of treatment on the street itself, so that's, that has another effect of slowing down traffic. Hey, this is not a normal street. So that was what was kind of accepted at the trustee level. And then the updated design of the water play with the buffer zone and the kind of you know, kind of not linear sidewalk there in the park was also accepted at that time. So, so we're really just looking for some feedback from you guys. This is where we are with the project now, as far as moving from conceptual to design documents. We're in the design document state. We have money in this year's budget to take those design documents to construction documents. So CD shovel-ready documents, you know, out of this year's budget for this project. Then as far as where we go next on this project is you know, hopefully taking those shovel-ready plans and looking at a Phase One, undergrounding of the overhead power lines is really our first phase, so that's in process. Right now, that's with Excel and they create a RFP for that work and that's in process right now. So hopefully, seeing some dirt in there, at least in the alley, pretty soon of the underground, the power lines, and get that, that project Phase One really, really started, so. So that's, that's where the project sits now. We, we did go after a land or water conservation grant for this and, and really that pushed the project, you know, pretty quickly for, because we wanted to see if we could get that grant. We were unsuccessful at that grant, unfortunately. It was a million dollar grant, so it needed a match of a hundred percent match. So we did have a million dollars in next year's budget, but in our budget process, that, since we didn't get the grant, that has been kind of redistributed and reallocated to other project needs in other parts of the budget. But we will keep some money in there. That still is to be determined. How much money we want to keep in, in that Chaco's Park Phase One plan for next year. And hopefully we'll be able to take that, whatever's, you know, in there and leverage it with some granting sources. We're looking at a GoCo Community Impact Grant that we I think this park matches, you know, some of those goals of that grant as far as community impact. I think we could provide a great grant, you know, showing that this park will have a large annual community impact on all the citizens. And you really, you know, we've called this, this park our Swiss Army knife park, so it has to be like everything to everybody, right? I mean, there's 45 special event days there. We put an ice rink down there. Farmers markets take place there, live, live music venue, you know, it is, it is so many things to so many people and and I think our, our design, you know, respects all those uses, so. So yeah, so that's where we are with the project and, yeah, we'd just love some feedback on kind of that, that woo nerf concept and how everybody feels about that and really, really pushing that pedestrian forward thinking on, on this, in this park. So just love to hear some feedback.
I could have commented. We've also talked a lot about the techniques that you can use to focus on the priority of pedestrian and bike before cars. So a car feels like they're entering a pedestrian. So I'm curious as to are you talking about different textures, raised surfaces, painting, you know, you've got your little zones, like the crossing zones. What, what have you all thought about? Because we talked about that a lot in here throughout town, and trying to have a cohesive theme throughout Carbondale.
Yeah.
So whatever you guys do or whatever we do, we should, you know, try to have a theme going through. I'm curious to what.
Yeah, that's something that's tangible. Yeah, yeah, I agree. We, we just talked about different materiality of, of the painting and maybe colored concrete, if it, you know, we don't know the exact materials yet we're going to be using, but that's the idea is to have a different, you know, definitely a demarcation in that location. So, yeah, yeah, whether it's texture and color, just to demarcate that as, as, hey, this looks like a crosswalk and, or, you know, and, and to have multiples, you know, as you see in the design, it has multiple spots across that forested section to where, yeah, it wouldn't feel so much like a road. And then I think the bollards themselves, you know, lend it, you know, kind of what's going on here, something's different here. And kind of has a different feel to it there. And then, then, you know, whether or not we don't have this, what they're, they're engineering it now, but we don't have it completed, but probably a little ramp up to that woo nerf level. So, so there would be kind of a little speed bump there to get you up to that pedestrian flat zone. Yeah, so those, those three things really, you know, start to, start to feel like, and it's, it'll be a skinny too. I mean, it's not a, we are, you know, the road is going to be skinnier than a normal road. That is that tactical urbanism piece that you got. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of what's been talked about there, is there being an event space first, road set.
How do you see the the all of the space where all of the green circles are impacting the space? It seems like all of that is area that normally the farmers market is filled with bender tents.
Yes.
So how all those green circles impact all those, all those venues?
Yeah, so we, of course, thought of that too, and, and we can fit 26 10 by 10s in the, in this park.
In the space?
Yeah, yeah, here's the world. Yeah, this, this little yeah, we definitely studied that.
The actual part.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, there's really tents there, but, but it looked like, I, I wasn't sure all the green, the green rectangles with a circle around them.
Yes, those are, those are planting green spaces with some benches, but, but those tents would go in between them.
Oh, in between?
Yeah, so.
Okay, I wasn't sure. That's all I was asking. Also, since the, the accessible parking space has been taken away, could not one of the, the, where you show parking easement one of those spaces be an accessible designated space?
Yeah. Yeah, what we've talked about there is, is over at the launch pad, you know, you have the alleyway, there's some parking that is, you know, either close by on, on the corner, on fourth or in the alley.
Right.
This parking easement is actually how we got the park donated, so the private parking unit that we can use. A black box there, so. So, so the, yeah, so our accessible parking would need to be at the launch pad in the alley or on, on the street. We could create some spots on the street.
So is that parking easement space to be used by vendors when they bring their stuff in?
Only a temporary drop and they're not, they aren't parked. They're only supposed to use it to drop and pick up and, and leave it, yeah.
Yeah, that's why they're managing it.
Yeah, it's actually, you know, how we, how the park was donated to us, that was part of the deal.
Apparently, am I interpreting it wrong, that's where that's where all of the vendors that use the park and the performers that bring their equipment in to perform on the stage, that's where they usually park.
We have, what you're not seeing on here is, we have 11 feet of park space on the east side of that, that parking easement. So that's considered still park space, so, so that's where the vendors and musicians are supposed to purchase their band, yeah. And, and then we also have nine feet on the, on the west side of that, that is, is also park land, that's still park on outside of the parking easement, so. Yeah, good question. So, yeah, because that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's an interesting you know, piece of this park that we had to kind of work around, right? And so the design actually really worked around that that being in existence and how do we kind of make it disappear for the park user? And how do we make that not be, you know, not be just this blank space? So that's where the fencing is going to go on and the, and the platform stage is going to be in front of that, so you're not even going to know it's, know it's there once the park is built up.
Is that, you have paper like squares all the way around? Is that one square foot dogs? Is that what then?
Yeah, that's what that, yeah. Yeah, so you can kind of get, go for the spacing and
Hey, Eric, is, is I'm sorry, Ted's questions answered? I was going to ask one, I didn't know whether he was.
Yes.
Hey, Eric, I, I noticed sidewalk on the one side, is that the east side, I think? And everything else is sort of favored, right? So there's no sidewalk on the west side, but it's hardscaped. Right?
Yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, kind of the way it is now, yeah.
And I, I guess, I, I mean, in, in a way, I'm just, is a sidewalk, since we're all hardscaped, is a sidewalk? What, what's the point of that? Calling that a sidewalk? And I'm just thinking about how this all connects to the surrounding area. You know, sidewalk versus hardscaped and, and how somebody coming through that area on a bike would transition, you know, off of fourth on to main or into the park. This, like, I assume on the west side, there is some connection to the sidewalk? And on the east side, what is being called a sidewalk would connect to the sidewalk to the, to the north and south?
Yeah, I think, I think I know what you're saying. That's, we did have that little, you know, kind of jog there of that, you know, sidewalk within the, within the property, so you know, where that buffer is, are you looking at the, the inside approach, yeah? Yeah, and so so you're just saying, what's the, the purpose for that?
Yeah, I mean, it's the idea that I mean, you could walk anywhere and probably ride bikes anywhere. It's all hardscapes. I, I, I'm wondering why you're calling that a sidewalk and I assume that means you're using different material, but my, my bigger question is I want to make sure that we have connectivity from the street and the sidewalks to the north and south of this park for pedestrians and cyclists. Right? That it's not all of a sudden you're, you got a jog to get onto a sidewalk or jogged it out of a paved area. There should be continuity as you come and go.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And, and there's, you know, you've, you've only diagrammed the park here, so I'm not sure what's happening off of that. But I, I think from by pet issue perspective, you know, this is an opportunity to make sure we're connecting the surrounding area into this air, into this park and making it, you know, safe and comfortable for pedestrians and cyclists.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see, I see what you're saying. I, I think that the, you know, the cyclist would be using the street, you know, they versus the sidewalk unless they're little kids, obviously, but
Right.
And so there's, I think you, you were looking at a, you know, north-south bike access would be street access and north-south access for pedestrians would be sidewalks, so I think that's, that's the difference.
Yeah, right, and I assume going on the main street, it's easy. There's a sidewalk all along there and it would be a smooth transition to the, to the south. I'm not sure what's happening there. There's not sure there's a good sidewalk or, or consistent sidewalk. There's, there's a change, there's change in, in width. Right? Because you said streets narrower, so I imagine these sidewalks and the hardscape won't line up with whatever is there, what might be there in the future. I, I'm just I, I guess I've just requested some thought be put into that to make sure that we have a plan for connecting, yeah, really from the south the pedestrian transition into the park.
Yeah, the, what, the sidewalk in front of the launch pad, you know, is a normal, you know, curb and gutter. Yeah, the what, the sidewalk in front of the uh launch pad, you know, is a normal uh, you know, curving gutter sidewalk, but on the. On the west side of that road, there is not a sidewalk, it's uh just dirt and then a parking lot and some trees, yeah, so there's. Um, actually, is there a sidewalk?
I think there's a side.
It's on the inside.
Yeah, yeah, and actually, you're right, the one in front of launch pad is a pretty substantial part sidewalk, so. We're gonna, we might have to curve that in to make sure it connects or something, and then, yeah, and then whatever, I I mean. To the extent there. Is a future sidewalk on the west side or, you know, whatever is there now should work, it's, that's all, I I just. You you know, wanna make sure that there's a smooth transition.
Okay, great, yeah, we can look at it.
If I can follow up with that, Eric.
Yeah.
First of all, great job, this is awesome, I'm just super excited about it. A real asset to downtown. Um, I wonder if you've given thought to how to integrate it. Or or into Main Street, you know, just I look at this, I I think what a great opportunity to have a raised crosswalk across Main, instead of just connecting the other side of Main. To the park, I don't know if that's something that's been discussed, but kind of following up mass interconnectivity to make sure that it just flows outward. Into the streets, Main Street in particular, you know, so you're coming across Main, you'd have a raised crosswalk, that would be totally cool. Um, more money, of course, but um.
Hey, and and you know, just to pick up on. I'm just gonna say, just to pick up on Rick's point and also to pick up on Lori's point, I think. You know, if we can find something in this park, in the pedestrian qua- crosswalks, that. Not only visually but physically, like a different material or a paver, that really makes cars recognize. That they're, you have to slow down. You know, I think of some kind of uh. Doesn't even have to be raised, it it just has to be different material that signifies to the car like a rumple strip that, you know, something's happening. Anyway, I want to pick up on Lori's point and then Rick, I I think makes a good point of. Whatever we find there in the park that we like, if that could be usable in other places in town. Where we want to try to achieve the same thing and maybe the a connector, like Rick is saying, using that same material to get across Main Street would be. Would be a big plus, I think. Is that, did I pick up on that right, Rick? Is that what you were saying? Yeah.
Hey, can I jump in real quick? Just I I wanna get this out like squarely. I, my understanding, and Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that this section of Fourth Street. From Main Street up to the alley is gonna be like a giant raised crosswalk. It's gonna be, the road is gonna be raised up to the level, so you're gonna have. Ups and downs as you come onto it. Regardless of whether you're coming.
Right.
Across Main or coming down Fourth Street.
Yeah, well, my. Eric, one other question, you know, we were we're working. Uh, we have a committee, it's um multiple organizations working on wayfinding, one of the things we've talked about is having some place. You know, central core downtown, where we might have a big display of, you know, the the trail system. You know, or the priority corridors in Carbondale that are designated. Um, for bike and pedestrian, and so we, there's a place we could do that. Right now, I know there's a spinning barrel kind of thing that's right there at the park. But um, as part of our wayfinding, we were thinking, you know, if we could direct people to a central location and they could get a big view of. The whole downtown and how to get places, that would be great. As part of that, that would be the place to do it.
Yeah, it would, yeah, I agree. Yeah, we we really see this as our central park, you know, our little club, and so things to emanate. Like where the red telephone booth is.
And Susan's on our on our committee too, and she's, you know, uh, awesome, right, commission, so she's.
Yep, so I'm sharing that, okay, no, that's good, that's good.
Could I ask a, like a general question about the use of the park?
Yeah.
Is the vision, I I did go online and saw the cool schematic and it was very really cool and that gave me a vision. And oh, this is what's coming, that was really helpful. But is the general idea is to have a park with very few rules and constrictions. On how we get to use it? Could you throw a frisbee? Could you walk your dog? Could you. Sit there and eat lunch on the ground? Can you play music?
Yeah, uh, you know, there was, in our survey data and in our public outreach, you know, we really kept track of. All the desired uses of the park, you know, by the public, and and it was. I mean, it was pretty vast, you know, some stuff that we just haven't, you know, never would have thought about, but, I mean, you know, it's, but I think. Obviously, rules are there for public safety, and so those would come first in in our process. You know, and that's that's why when we put an ice rink there, we're like, no hockey can be played here, no flying pucks here, you know, this is not. Spoke out to the rodeo grounds, you know, so so we, there's always gonna be rules in part. I mean, I think that's the the reality of a of a park space like this, but the idea is to have it to be multifaceted. Um, and have it really be able to satisfy all those desires. We have forty-five plus. Active, you know, event days in this park space, but then that leaves the rest of the time where it's a passive work. And and needs to act um also accordingly to people's passive needs too. You know, so so, you know, I think that that when it gets kind of built out, um. You know how sometimes you don't put a trail in until you see which way the public goes? And then you put your trail in, I mean, that's, I think that this park will have a little bit of that, how are people gonna use it, what's the appropriate use? Be kind of figured out in the process.
As it goes?
Yeah, I mean, we'll definitely, you know, um, there there will be rules and regs of of this park, but but the idea is to have it be. Used in so many different, different ways, you know, so, um, yeah, and that's that's the exciting part about this park. It's already shown us through our public outreach that, hey, you know, it's not like we were given a piece of land, we have no idea what to do with. We already knew what what its uses were and and successful uses, so so that's how we, you know, build this plan around those successful uses of park already.
Hey, Eric, I just have one question, it's not really bike pet related, I'm curious about the water feature, which is beautiful, but I'm I'm just wondering what. What conversations were had around, um, you know, water and our climate and drought and all that concern, I'm wondering how you guys ended up with a water feature?
You bet, it's uh, one of our goals was to have this in those non-programmed days, be a spot where. Uh, people would want to come to, right, and then draw, and so watching, um. You know, water play features in Aspen, watching water play features in Willetts, you know. It it's an amazing draw with kids and and even adults, you know, to go, you know, play in the water on a hot summer day, and our summers aren't getting any cooler. Around here. And this was one of the uh kind of free amenities that we really want to bring to the park, you know, we're building a pool. Um, that's a paid for amenity, um, you know, that'll also have water play features in it, and uh, but this would be a free amenity available to to all to.
Yeah, I like that, that's, yeah, that's a good thought, okay, I, yeah, I was just curious because.
Well, and I also, one, I also want to let you know, um, you know, there's a couple of different ways those water features can work, you can have just a passive. Um, system where the water flows through, so it's a one-time use, no, no reuse or no recirculation. Use with uh treatment, so we're actually looking at a recirculation uh treatment type of facility there. So you're actually building a small, and that's a very expensive option, but it's also the the right option for for us in our water, water use.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Um, any other questions or we could?
I was just gonna ask one thing about, like, the, like closures on either end, like if the. Road is closed to vehicles, if there's, I don't know if there's, even sometimes you see. I don't know if this is easy, but um, ways to. Basically install temporary um poles or whatever. In in a little hole that opens up or something.
Yeah, that's that's what we've designed, yeah, 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 they're removable ballards and and uh, yeah, and and that's that's how we kind of envision. This shutting down for special events, um, and, you know, which, you know, cuz you can, it's not gonna, it's not a big effort. Um, yeah, that's that's how we're envisioning the closures of this this space for special events.
Illuminating having to carry out.
So you just have to carry heavy ballers.
Do those also work as a safety, like a vehicle couldn't drive over those?
Yeah, they're they're deep in the ground and they're they're they'll be designed and for that purpose, yeah, for safety. I would come, a couple of things I just wanted.
Yeah.
Share real quick with you is, um, you know, with our pool project kind of getting pushed into the spring. Um, we were gonna start our um ten-year master plan, um, which, the the last ten-year master plan is a bike, pedestrian and trails master plan. And so I just wanted to put that out to this group, um, we're not gonna start that until two thousand twenty-seven now. Just uh, just bandwidth-wise and just what we have on our plate, but um, we want the, you guys be involved in that process. And and our last uh master plan from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-five. Was a well-done master plan done by outside consultants that uh, you know, that we were able to really use it as a guide map. Um, for for budget purposes, for, you know, really. It was really well done, that's what I didn't sit on the shelf and gathered as we used it, you know, every budget cycle, every year, we'd like to say, what does the master plan say? So that's what we want to recreate, um, we'll be putting out probably an RFP. Um, you know, by the end of this year, so get somebody on board in two thousand twenty-seven, but I just want to make you guys aware of that. Cuz we'll have, you'll be involved in that process too, so.
Thank you.
Um, and then one other thing, uh, while I got you here, um, and have you guys heard about the International Mountain Bike Association? Um, community designation for a uh trail town, it's a recognition process. Um, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, I'll leave some paperwork for you, um, that it there. Um, providing trail town recognition and you have certain categories, you have to abide by, and looking at their. Um, what they're looking for, um, we, this town is pretty close, they're looking for four different types of uh. Things that a town has, a front country trails, back country trails, gravity biking, bike trails and a bike park, so. We really have all those, so, um, just just want to bring it to your attention and uh.
Eric, do you have something, a link or something on that you can send to me? I mean, that would be great if you could send it to me, please, yeah.
Yeah, and there's some paperwork here I can leave for you to.
So if you're designated that kind of town, then you can apply for grants and things like that?
Um, I I haven't gotten that far into it, but uh, yeah, just, it looked like a, an interesting, um, you know. Way to get some some recognition of your your town's efforts on on the local trails, yeah, and bike parks and just bike focus, so.
And then. Okay. All right, thank you, Eric, very much for that update, it looks, looks great.
Great, thank you guys for your time.
Yeah.
Nice information, thanks.
Okay, uh, item four point two. Elect a vice chair, the moment has come, um. I would, I would like to nominate Rick to be the vice chair, and um. Rick, you've probably been acting as a vice chair anyway, where you've picked up to Slack when I've been around, you've. Picked up a lot of projects on the side, uh, you've been a driving force, so I would love it if you would. Accept my uh, my um, my choice or or my request that you'd be the vice chair.
Uh, yes.
Okay, you have to apparently form, you have to formally accept, uh, so that's part of the process.
I I resisted because I really would like if we had. Um, you know, younger leadership, um, and I think we'll get there, so I'm willing to fill in.
Okay. Well, we can, we both have to just stay alive a little longer, I guess, the um.
Just keep liking.
Okay, uh, I guess, uh, Ali, we should take a vote on that, right?
Yeah, you can just do all in favor.
Okay, all in favor of Rick becoming the vice chair, please show your hands, my hand is up, Ali, I'm I'm a yes.
Yeah, and Ali on mine.
Hand is up, thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, and Rick, just to let you know right now, I'm not gonna be at any meetings between now and April, so good luck. I'm gonna be traveling for the next four months, yeah, no, okay. Okay, where are we here, uh? You know, Rick, why don't we skip down, uh, to do a quick update on the the wayfinding project before we get into the two other topics? That uh, I just want to sort of have a discussion about, so you do a, just your five minutes on where we are in the wayfinding and and who's stepping up to support, that would be great.
Okay. Um, we've met, it's a, we have a group of, I think, seven, from multiple organizations, super talented people, I'm just so. Grateful and thankful, and we have Andrea Stewart from the Chamber of Commerce, Michael Stow from Carbon Darts and the Beta District. Brett Meredith from Rafta, Susan Ray representing Parks and Rec, and H. Friendly as well, Oliver from Bike Ped. Ted is, I mean, I'm sorry. Um, David has been our alternate, so if I'm, if I can't attend or if Oliver can't attend, David steps in, so he's been involved as well, cuz we can just. Work all over night in this meeting. Um, and then Ron Kokish also also from H. Friendly, and this, the whole group has stayed really engaged, um, really interested in this process, it's a long, complicated process. We've, we get deeper and we realize how many, you know, pieces there are to figure out, um, but. Michael Stout in particular has extensive experience, worked for a landscape architect, National Landscape Architect Firm, did. Service as a consultant, did this kind of work before, so he's been a wealth of information, um. What we've, what we're hoping, uh, with some encouragement, encouragement from a couple of trustees, is to submit something. For twenty twenty-six, in case the money somehow gets freed up and we realize that may be a long shot, but we want to. You want to um, be ready in case, you know, we might do a first phase in twenty twenty-six, and that first phase would probably look something like. You know, signage at four kind of key entry points into town, you know, the park and ride. Out on east side, Snowmass in Maine, on the south side, by the fire station and the, of course, the roundabout, directing people. Really towards the town, the central part of town. And then maybe as a, if we, we have the funding, a few key locations on the way into town, like. Eighth in Rio Grande or Fourth in Rio Grande, um, you know, Sopris in Wentz or Sopris in Snowmass, you know. Maybe not not more than ten signs initially, just to get, sort of get started, let people see what we're trying to do. The complication is that, as you know. You know, there's Rafta signs out there that are natural wood, there's. You know, Creative District signs that are different, the Jay Brad papers have some signs, and so we're really working on how we can, instead of creating another sign or a look. We can integrate all this somehow into one connected, integrated system. It looks, so it's recognizable, you're not, you're not looking at five different designs, so we're, that's that's a challenge working on that. Um, but we've got the right people at the table, so we're really, really, really hopeful about that, and everybody. The other good thing is that, and Andrea reported at our last meeting, that she met with the board of directors at the chamber, and they said that he would come up with some funds for it. They would help, they're really looking for this to happen, and and we tossed out some numbers and she didn't seem, didn't acquit anything, but five grand was something that. They might be able to do, so we, that that creates some opportunity for us, with Michael's experience and Brett's experience doing signs. They think we can, you know, they've got connections, we can do this maybe less expensively than we thought initially, so it's great. I'm afraid I'm really excited about it, and we've got the right people to do, so I hope I hold that under five minutes.
Okay, great, thanks, Rick. Any questions here for Rick on that?
I just have one comment, you could do sort of a call to artists, like the Mountain Fair T-shirt.
Yeah.
Um, remember I came in with my little sign that my daughter had designed, the graphic, Carbondale Cares, with the, she was a dog on a skateboard. Um, but yeah, you could do a call to artists for the signage. Which would also help get the word out of what we're doing.
Yes, yeah.
When you're ready.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, okay, you know, the the last couple of things, you know, I get since they're kind of. Um, okay, you know, the, the last couple of things, you know, I get since the kind of time of year where you take stock in what we've done and, and what we want to try to get done, um, I, I, I'd forgotten it at the time when I put this together, but, um, Rick and I did present a list of eight items, uh, to the, um, trustees in June, when we had our meeting with them, and, um, which really gets the, the ideas under five point two. Uh, and these, these were just ideas that, you know, Rick sent me and, and in preparation for this meeting, I put down here. But I think they're all kind of captured in what, um, we, we presented to the trustees in June, and I, and I think, you know, the, the guidance from the trustees at that time was, hey, you know, have at it as long as it fits inside the, the walls of the, uh, of MAP. And, you know, I think they do, uh, but, you know, what I want to do is just, you know, have a conversation around two things with you guys and see if we can generate ideas, one of them is about, okay, what do we want to work on next year? And, uh, you know, I wish Chris was here, because it's really, I, I think, a link to the trustees, but we have some things backing up, right? In terms of, we sort of reached some conclusions on things and, uh, uh, you know, the multi-motor quarters, the wayfinding, uh, tactical urbanism projects, we gotta figure out some way to, close the loop with the trustees on these things, so we can, you know, continue to push forward. Um, but, you know, that's sort of a, a side, a top, side discussion, I think, with Chris as our liaison. But the, um, you know, I guess the first one is coming out of, you know, what, what we did last year and what we can learn from twenty twenty five, I think the big project was tactical urbanism. How to identify, uh, projects that we can get in the pipeline, um. And I, I'd love to see us build, uh, build on that and develop a real process that can be replicated year after year for, uh, early on in the year, identifying what projects we would consider, you know, working with, uh, staff to, see what project we can get executed, and then debriefing afterward to see what's one's work and didn't, and how we want to move forward on those. You know, sort, so, you know, just what we did this year, but to formalize it and make it a, a real process. Um, so I think that's something, uh, we should work on. I also don't want that to be the only way we identify projects, so I guess the first question for discussion is, how else can we come up with, projects, you know, traffic, safety, pedestrian safety projects without having to rely on tactical urbanism? You know, which could be a long process, right? The things that go in there could take a couple of years to develop. And, um, you know, I know one of the things we talked about, going back to when we were discussing MAP, is that, there's some, I, I, I'm not sure who brought it up, Ted, maybe you did or David, but, you know, there was, uh, I think Durango had this, you know, certain designs were just dangerous. And we were gonna try to identify certain situations that would automatically qualify for traffic calming. Um, so that was one idea that we talked about, but just any other ideas you guys have or want to try to, serve up for developing, uh, safety projects that can get considered. So, does everybody understand if there's a question in there, or is there, or did I not ask a question?
Well, so Matt, it sounds like, so we've got our list in MAP, that's got a whole list of projects. Um, and you're asking, in addition to those, the projects that are listed in MAP, do we know of other ones, or do we want to come up with a way?
I think that, you know, I guess, yeah, yeah, you're on to it, Michael, I, you know, tactical urbanism was one, one suggestion in MAP with how we could identify capital proven projects and safety projects for, for bikes and pets. Uh, there's gotta be other ways to identify and surface and present for discussion other ideas. Whether it's just going through the MAP list, uh, whether it's, uh, walking around town and doing a survey, uh, you know, whether it's doing the walk on, it's, I'm just looking for other channels to identify projects that we want to present.
What about, like, consulting with Rafta? Where, you know, every time we talk about what's going on on the Rio Grande Trail, what always comes up is, well, that's Rafta controlled. So, kind of going through that channel, meeting with them and then having them actually implement whatever idea we have.
Okay.
Well, I, I wonder, what the town's process is, and Kevin's here, obviously, so what's the town's process in deciding, or is there a process, deciding certain things from the MAP plan that just, we need to do? Um, and obviously we can't do them all at once. But was the process to just for the town, to, to, to look at MAP and say, these are the things we can do, we should do, because, we spent whatever to get this plan and, and these are obvious, is there a process?
I think what we would really be looking for, and I don't know if this will be helpful or not, but, the, not every project that was listed in MAP Carbondale to consider doing, needs to have tactical urbanism done before, and I think that's Matt's point to a certain degree. So, I think what would be helpful, and I kind of thought this was the direction we were going after the last meeting, was, for Bike Ped to look at that and prioritize it. Prioritizing it then gives you this list for multiple years, as funding becomes available, we can just start, knocking those things off. And, and I don't think every single project in there needs to be tried first. I mean, there's lots or several, I think, like missing connections that are listed in there. Which one's a priority for you guys? I think that would be the most helpful, like.
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, yeah, that's right, that, we don't need to do tacticals as well, and that, tactical organism was really, to divine new things or, you know, cer, you know, so, yes, the, the, the list of projects in MAP, should be fair game, and I think, I agree with you, we should work on prioritizing that. Uh, connecting with Rafta or other groups that have interest in town, uh, you know, could be a link to projects, um. Uh, just surveying the town and seeing what we think is dangerous or, or what might qualify, uh, you know, so I think that, uh, figuring out how to, uh, develop, lists of capital improvements for the town to consider, and then get on a list of to be done's when money's available, should be a big focus for us in twenty twenty six. And I just want to be creative in how we go about identifying projects, right? Who we include, what we look at, how we make the case for these things, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Um, can I just jump in briefly?
Yeah.
I wanted to say, um, a big part of the reason I came to this mission is because of, um, crossings on one thirty three, and I think the relationship with, uh, C dot is one that's been a limiting factor for a lot of, um, dangerous situations. And I feel like in twenty twenty six, some sort of conversation, some, some, some sort of chance to like, talk about crossings and, like, school zones on one thirty three is something I, I, that's what I'm here for, honestly.
Yeah, okay, fair enough, right? So that's a, that's, and, and that's a, you know, maybe that's, uh, ramping up, I, I know that, Kevin and his town is working with C dot, one crossings and another one's planned. But certainly there's other things on Highway one thirty three, and I know that, uh, uh, Ally, maybe we could be a little more proactive and, and try to, uh, H Friendly's, done a lot there, but maybe we can insert ourselves a little bit more with some areas of concern that we might have, but I think that's a good point. Kevin, can you say for a minute where that, uh, other crossing's going in case people aren't aware?
Um.
The other one thirty three crossing in twenty twenty next year, I think?
Yes, um, kind of near the intersection of Went and one thirty three. It'll be south of that intersection, generally lining up with the sidewalk or the trail that comes out of the Third Street Center out to the trail along Highway one thirty three.
I guess, the other thing I, I guess, you know, I, it occurs to me, we also gave the trustees back in the spring, list of how we would recommend prioritizing, and obviously the first thing I think was safety. But also along the side of what we're also trying to achieve is provide, um, a protection and a reminder about the culture of Carbondale and encourage more people to just be out biking, and, and walking as an alternative to a car. So I think, I, and I say that because one of the things we also talked about was, the easy low hanging fruit things that we could do that would visibly deliver that message. You know, it's, I don't know what those are, crosswalks, some bop, you know, it's, it's the, um, ball bouts, those kinds of things. And so, I, I don't, I, it just seems like we, we started that process, actually, didn't, didn't we have a committee back in the spring?
We did, we did, yeah.
So, I, it seems like we could continue that too, with the idea that if we could do it inexpensively, and it delivers a message about, you know, get out, walk, bike, slow down, then we also, that's a secondary concern of the safety, but it's important.
Yeah, and that was, yeah, and, yeah, and, um, that was also on the discussion we had with the trustees was, uh, uh, low cost safety things, you know, the low hanging fruit, um, and, and I guess that, you tied that into just the PR and the community outreach that was on our list, Rick. And, you know, that list that we presented to the trustees, I, I think was really developed from conversations we'd had, it, it, you know, with our, with the committee about things we want to work on, um. So we, you know, I don't think we've made these, uh, wayfinding was on the list, for example, that's, that's, we made progress on that, primary quarters are on the list, we made progress on that. Uh, community outreach was on the list, I think, um. You know, we would identify, uh, let's say we, you know, there's maybe a list of six things, but there's three things we want to, jump into right away, you know, I, I think, uh, sort of formalizing the plan or the mechanism for identifying capital improvement projects, and, and ramping up our sort of public relations and community outreach would probably be the first two on my list. I don't know if you guys agree with that or have other things you'd want to, uh, you'd want to see addressed. If we can make it through those two, I think would be a successful year, if we can get to a couple more, that would be great.
Yeah, I feel in previous discussions that the, um, the PR and the public education and the sort of philosophy, the creative philosophy of our town, has gotten pushed down the list because we needed to get to the, well, what are we gonna change? And what are we, what's our goal of the projects? So now that we've got that, now maybe that frees us up a little bit as those things get done according to budget. Then we can start incorporating the more creative side. Because I think the public education is tremendous to the success of whatever we do.
Yeah, okay. Uh, you, you know, that, Kevin, this is one for you, I think, I, you know, um, you know, since the last meeting, I, I know we talked about, there's not a lot of money until twenty twenty seven, given the crosswalks we've been working on. Um, and, and you would, I think, offered up that, you know, maybe we could do something if, if it wasn't that expensive, like maybe putting bike lanes in or, or something. And I, my inclination went then was to sort of slow it down, uh, just to make sure we get it right. Um, but, you know, I'm thinking now that we really need to start doing some things. I mean, you know, just so the community, not only the community sees it, but that we all feel like we're, we're getting some things done rather than just putting ideas on paper. And, you know, I'd love to circle back, uh, and figure out if, uh, bike lanes, if we decided that bike lanes and, and, and I don't know what approvals we might need, either the concept or design, to get those done on Hendrick and West Main. Uh, but I'd love to see if we can get that budgeted and get that done next year. Um, if it's, uh, you know, I, I think you have kind of picked up on that, that of all the project, that might be the least expensive and something we might be able to tackle.
I'm, I'm just gonna throw this out, if it, it would be the least expensive to do with paint, it would probably also be the least effective, based on what I've seen since we've taken down the bollards.
Yeah, what, oh.
Need elaborate on that statement, what, what do you mean, effective, based on what we've seen?
Uh, it feels to me, being out there, like the speeds have picked up because you lost that narrowing feeling. Traffic rarely pays attention to stripes on a road unless they're about to run into something. So it's really less effective in that overall safety slowdown. So, if, if I was gonna recommend something based on the feedback we got, from all of that, I, I do think that the public is on board with those. But if we're gonna come up with a permanent solution, I think it's gonna take some thought, some engineering, so it's maintainable, not only in the summer, but in the winter, and it achieves what we want, to achieve, which is safety for the bicyclists and that traffic calming effect, and I don't think you get that just paint.
Do you think there is a, a, a long-term solution that would include some kind of bollards that would, work for, for maintenance and snow removal and everything?
You know, uh, honestly, I've been thinking about this a lot after compiling the comments and seeing the results. And I, uh, there's a lot of things that have gone through my mind, and I wonder if we don't do something, at least look into something similar to what we did on the west side of Eighth Street, before the post office made us put in those, uh, mailboxes on those bowl bouts. There was a gap, if you recall, between the curb and those bowl bouts, that was straight through, basically like the gutter ran straight through it. I wonder if you couldn't do something very similar to that, and, you know, evenly spaced, but not just a barrier wall or something like that. But create those islands that separate the bike lane from the travel lane, because then you still get that constriction every so often that would help potentially slow traffic down. But it would also provide a visual cue, that, and, and we'd sign it and stripe it on the backside, I'm not saying, eighteen inches like on Eighth Street, but maybe we have room to fit kind of a narrow or one of those concepts in, which would then allow us to take some of our smaller equipment in the wintertime, and go along that curb line and kick it out into the street. And our plows could then come pick it up, because particularly on Hendrick, we plowed to the middle and pick it up.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's great, what, what about on, on Main, West Main?
Gotta think about that, I think you need something similar in concept. But the question on West Main is, we typically kick that, that's one of the few roads in town that we go out of the outside, so I don't know the, um, and, and it's not all about winter maintenance, but it's, it's about making sure that whatever you put in there can be maintained in the winter, because there's gonna be people that want to use it.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I, I would caution against just trying to go out and do something just because paint's cheap. If we're gonna do something, I think what we need to do is just commit to, spending the time necessary with our consultant engineer, we have one that works for the town regularly. They're the ones that designed the East Line and Crossing, they're designing the Wim Crossing. And take a little deeper look at how do we do this so it works for what we're trying to achieve, and not just so we can say, we painted bike lanes, right now bike lanes are still kind of sort of painted on Hendrick and West Main.
But I wonder if, in the meantime, if we can't do anything in twenty twenty six, could we redo, the twenty twenty five temporary features? So that the, so that the, you know, citizens of town see that it just didn't go away, and it just went away for the winter, but, you know, we, we put the bollards up again. You know, we we put the bollards up again. For twenty twenty six, um, in the spring. And yeah, in the spring, so and then we hope that we can make, figure out a permanent solution by twenty twenty seven, but in the meantime. You're still seeing it, it hasn't gone away.
I I am not opposed to that if we can work with our consultant. They'll just come up with a conceptual design, we don't need to have construction drawings. But come up with spacing. I would never in a million years would I reinstall that roundabout, I think if we're gonna go a direction, I think I put it in that memo I had in there. Let's, let's try just bike lanes on Hendrick. And see if we can come up with a conceptual design, because we can recreate those medians with those bollards.
Yeah.
And try that. And do the striping through the intersections and not have the those merge points and things like that. I think that would tell us a lot about. Will that work?
Could we do that in twenty twenty six?
Yeah.
It could be, put the bollards back up on West Main in twenty twenty six, if we don't have a permanent solution there.
I I think that's just needing to be thought through a little bit more, I don't think that. It's some elusive concept, we're not the only people that. Are thinking about putting bike lanes on a road that gets plowed to the outside, it's just what do you do? So I, I'd like to do is recreate. What might be the more permanent solution? And I think we could do that. Potentially. I I know some of the folks don't like the bollards, but I think instead of having a line of them down there, if you're just creating these little islands. It might be more susceptible.
Yeah, I I I'm, well, listen, I'm glad you've been thinking about it, I I think that's. The right way to go is to have some kind of physical barrier in addition to the paint. Um, if it's cost prohibitive, you know, maybe what we could do is come up with a design. If it includes paint, we could paint this summer with the with the physical structures to be added or something like that, but. Um. We we can come up with something, but I I'm I'm glad you're thinking that way, we just, and this is part of the question I have, which is. We we've got to figure out for all these things that we kind of serve up through these projects. Uh, you know, how to, how the town is gonna work to come up with a design that works, right? So this will be the first sort of test of that too, I guess.
Right, and don't, I mean, all those bollards. The ones that didn't get completely destroyed and get run over. We have at the shop, so if we can come up with a design before. Next. Late spring. We we could do this with both the striping and the temporary bollards until we come up with a final plan.
Was there a significant loss of? Of that equipment, uh, this year, this year?
Not significant.
So, so what I'm wondering is. What we're saying conceptually is to continue for the next year using tactical urbanism. Strategies. But. Prioritizing the list of projects that we want to do to be incorporated into the. The ten year plan that Eric was talking about. Uh, basically straight out of that, just prioritizing those projects to be incorporated into the ten year plan. Was that the concept of how we're going to integrate everything that we're talking about as we as we move down the. The timeline?
No, I think, I think. The timeline for implementation of some permanent solutions. Is. Or can be. Much more rapid than that once we get into twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, well, those would be ready to go projects, basically.
Right, so I don't, like Eric was saying, they're not gonna get into their master planning process until starting it in twenty twenty seven.
Right.
I think we could be out there potentially doing. The permanent infrastructure that would be associated with the bike lanes on Hendrick and West Main in twenty seven.
But that just presumes that it, that our plan will automatically be integrated into their, their ten year plan.
Your plan is way more detailed than their plan's gonna be. Theirs is more, but it, there's gonna be more focused on the park and recreation side of it and how. The trails and the sidewalks integrate into their park locations and how does it get people there, is that sort of thing? Um. But there'll be some overlapping, the plan you already have, I think, is much more detailed than it will get into in there. The there's just like a mini version of a comp plan.
Well, so Matt, it sounds like the, to to answer your question, maybe the exercises for us to. Review the project list in MAP and maybe the walk audits. And maybe that kind of. Maybe from there we come up with a few categories of. No brainer, cheap things to do. And some continued tactical organism and then some like prioritized. Projects for when there's money.
Yeah, I think that's right, I think, uh, that maybe try to connect like Lori said, Rafta and. Uh, you know, Ally said a big goal of hers is to. I would want thirty three safety, another thing that we had mentioned to the trustees in June was. Trying to. Understand how one thirty three. Impacts every other street in town and, uh, you know, from industrial way roundabout and people coming. Using Eighth and Cowan to circumvent that, so, uh, you know, I I think there's projects around MAP, around. Um, walk audits, around tactical urbanism, around, uh, low hanging fruit, working with Rafta, working with C dot. All of that gets put into the category in my mind of twenty twenty six, we we work on. Continuing to identify. Capital improvement, safety projects. And formalizing a process for, uh. Getting those, you know, uh. Thought through, designed, approved, accepted. That that's kind of the big category for twenty twenty six, you know, I think, um. Picking up on the PR and community outreach aspect, and, you know, I think a lot of the messaging that we came up with in the map. You know, builds a basis for that, and, uh. You know, like you said, Lori, it's really important that we get on that is another big category, um. And, um. So I think we'll start the year kind of focusing on those two things. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, I I would be more than willing to be on a. We are in community outreach committee or subcommittee. Like anybody else, maybe maybe we could. Just start to brainstorm about what we could do over the course of a year. And, um, I think, Kevin, we don't, do not, we have, we have access to a page on the website that we can use for messaging. So, you know, we haven't used that, I think, since a year ago.
I, I actually looked at that today and that was gonna be one of the things I brought up, but it might be good to look at that. And see what you want to update, but we can do that.
But maybe if there were two, you know, two of us, some committee in these, they would address just a list of things we might do and stay on every month, we're not gonna let it go. And Lori.
I volunteer that.
Lori and I can do that, and, um, and we could have a, we could have a work session on it, if more people want to get involved, for sure, that would be great, but.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think what you're saying is if we get in the habit of keeping that updated, maybe people actually start getting the habit of going there too, right?
And, you know, and also more later to the editors, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, we could talk to the sort of the son about quarterly. Update on bike pit, all things bike pit, I don't know, what was just going store?
Yeah, I can.
That would be great, yeah.
I have a logistics question, I I find a lot of times like the day after our meeting. My brain starts catching up to all the things we talked about, or if I travel to a little town somewhere else. I take pictures with my phone of of, I'm always taking pictures of bike crossings. But then I don't know what to do with that information, because maybe it's like a whole month to our meeting. So Matt. What would be a good way in between, rather than holding on, I mean, do I just wait the twenty nine days? And then come and present, or can I email you my little crazy ideas in between? What do you suggest?
Yeah, I think, you know, um, I try to document things and and keep notes on what we might want to bring up and 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 remember. Um. You can always send me a picture or an idea, uh, the the best thing to do is, you know, every month. As we come up, you know, I usually ask you guys, you want any ideas to talk about on the agenda, is to. You know, let me know, right, I want to talk about this, you know, is that answer your question? You think? Or you just, you know, there's really no way, there's no way to, we don't have. You know, in between meetings, right, and and we have rules and we can't get together, so, uh, but if there's something you see and you want to discuss it. Um, you know, just let me know, we can tranch out some time for it.
Right, and it's appropriate to for me to email you with, let's say, a photo and say, um, hey, I just saw this. This weekend, we can talk about it at the next meeting, you don't mind that kind of.
No, no, not at all, just send me, send it to me and, yeah.
For Kevin, for some time, if if we just responded, one of each one of us, it's something we saw to the entire group, but there was no discussion. Is that okay? Just, hey, I saw this, just boot it out for our next meeting. So she can send it to all of us.
I think that would be okay as long as all of you fight the urge to hit reply.
You know, I, I mean, I should, I would be cool, because we'd at least be.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's a better answer, that's a better answer, Lori, yeah, so you can, you you can send ideas to all of us and everybody could do that, just don't reply all. Okay.
If you're gonna do that, so I can be the big bad parent in the room, why don't you include me on that as well?
Okay.
I I know you're all sneaky enough to reply all and then take my name.
Kevin, you might want deniability when we start breaking the rules, because you know, we're a bunch of rule breakers on the, on the bike pitch commission. The, uh, um, okay. Um, Kevin, I I I guess the last thing on my mind is, we, I gotta. It, how can we figure out how to work with you on this, these design issues, like how can a bike pad? Uh. Help flush out ideas for things like the bike, for the, the, uh. The bike lane design, I mean, how can we lend help in that?
I think if you guys are cool with it, um. What I'd really like to do is talk to some other professionals about some of these ideas. Have them sketched up and then I can bring them. To meetings as we go through the winter. And then you guys can opine on them and I I can explain, like. Particularly if there's something goofy that you go, why'd you do this? I can then explain why, doesn't mean you'll all agree with me, which is fine, but, um. I I think we need to, when we're getting, when we're talking about actually making physical changes to our roadways. I I don't want to do a spitball approach and then go. Go figure out how to do this, I would much rather. Say, okay, we all understand what we're trying to do here. Professional engineers have taken a look at this, this is kind of the concept, what do you guys think?
Okay, yeah, well, we'll, uh, we'll let you get to the end of the year and then we'll try to get that on the agenda so we can start flushing that out. That sound good? Sometime early, early next year, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask one, definitely one question? Um, we're talking about West Main. Before we stop there, I I know you hesitate, when that came up in MAP to make that a permanent suggestion because of potential backup going west. Backing up into traffic to the roundabout was, did that happen? I noticed it's still there and I was pretty excited about that, is that?
Oh, yeah, Kevin, yeah, Kevin answered, yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Um, so. It has backed up into the roundabout. A couple of times that I've been told about. I'm not tremendously concerned with that right now, particularly with the addition of that second lane on the highway coming from City Market. Um. Because most people that are turning that way should be in that. Lane anyway, and I think most of the through traffic actually tends to stay in the left lane. Um. My intent is to, it it's permanent at this point, if you. I don't know if you came through there today, but I had our striper was in town last weekend and he actually striped stop bars on Main Street at those new stop signs, so.
Yeah, that came up in the last meeting, uh, Rick, when you were were out, um.
Yeah, and. Just real quick, I'll keep this super short, Matt, one of the reasons. That I chose to leave it that way. Was because the newest version of the manual on uniform traffic control devices in U T C D. That has not been adopted by Colorado yet, but will be. What they changed, one of the criteria. And sight distance for is now a word for a four way stop or will be. So.
Okay.
That, that gave me the latitude to do that where it may not have strongly existed before.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions, Lori, wrap it up? All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you soon, all right, bye bye.
Thanks.